When am I gonna be there? Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the North St. Paul Arts and Culture Commission Meeting. I'm calling this meeting to order right now. It's 6:30, May 3, 2023. All right. I called the meeting to order, so now we will take role. Brandy, would you like to take role for us?
I would love to, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner, oh, sorry, Councilmember liaison Wong.
Here.
C.C. Garaki, she's our student member, absent. Commissioner Yang.
Here.
Commissioner Ritchie.
Here.
Commissioner Wen. Not here. Commissioner Maher.
Present. Maher. Yep.
Commissioner Black.
Excused.
Excused. And Commissioner Ned, Neddo.
Here.
Did I get it right?
You did.
And Chair Sonic.
Here. Okay, and I will just mention that our regular staff representative, our Commission Secretary, Sarah Lang, is out unexpectedly, so we have Brandy Howe here, serving in her stead. So thanks, Brandy, for being here. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Next, we'll move on to adopting the agenda as it is listed. We're getting in kind of a routine here with our agenda, but we have also an item here included in under Section 7, 2024 Budget Discussion. I think Councilmember Wong, maybe you will help us with that and what we want to talk about at that point?
I can help you with that.
Brandy, you will? Okay, great. Anything else? Anybody have questions, thoughts, changes?
Can we have that budget discussion meeting first?
Prior to the updates?
Yep.
Yeah, I think we can do that.
Thank you.
Anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as listed with the changes of order in Section 7.
So moved?
Moved by Commissioner Maher.
I second.
Second by Commissioner Yang. Any discussion? All those in favor of adopting the agenda as is, please say aye. Aye opposed? Okay, the agenda has been adopted. Approval of minutes, if you've all had a chance to review the minutes from our April 5 meeting, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the minutes as is unless anyone would like to suggest any edits.
So moved.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Neddo.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Maher. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving the minutes as is signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Okay, minutes are approved, meeting open to the public. There is no one here. And so we're on to public hearings. We have no public hearings. So we're on to Commission Business Action items and recommendations, and so then we will start with our budget discussion. All right. Brandy, do you want to kind of lead us through expectations here?
Sure. I think this is less of a discussion and more of just a heads up.
Yeah.
As the city coun- or sorry, the staff, it's been a long day. We are in the process of developing a new capital improvement program, not program, but a process for establishing the capital improvement plan. I'm not sure if you're familiar with what that is.
Mm-hmm.
It's basically been kind of a itemized Excel spreadsheet about how we're going to expend public funds for infrastructure projects over a 10-year period. So what we have planned for now and into the future is to provide a little bit more background into what that those budget items will be. So we will have budget items for all infrastructure projects, but we'll also do a proposal for various events, activities, projects of the commissions. So we're kind of approaching each of the commissions that have expenditures, and we want you to think about how you're going to do your plan, your work plan, basically, for the future. So I'm not entirely sure what Sarah's plan is. I think she's probably gonna kind of walk you through this at the June meeting.
Okay.
But I want to express that it's a good idea to start planning early. What is the annual plan for this body? What do you intend to accomplish in 2024? What are the projects and events, and what do you think they're gonna cost? And then we will also, I gave her an example of a CIP worksheet to complete, and it basically includes, you know, the project title, what is the department, what is the description of that, it could be fairly robust, basically like a paragraph, and what is the justification for that. So an example would be, for the Parks Commission, for example, we have a park improvement plan. We might pull a project out of that, out of that plan that says we need to update such-and-such park with X new facility. The justification is it was approved in a long-range plan, and so we're just executing that plan. So that's kind of just the gist of it. I'll take any questions.
I do have a question. So are we only looking at 2024, or is this the CIP for '24 through '28?
Well, the CIP is actually a 2024 through 2033, so it will be 10 years. But the projects, just think about them as an annual thing for this, for this group, I would imagine, because your funds are coming, well, I guess I need a little bit more background from the Finance Director, and I need to process myself in terms of what funds come from where. But infrastructure projects generally might fall in a 10-year period. But you guys, for the purposes of you, just think about what your projects are gonna be and what they might cost next year.
That's good, because I have plans for everything through 2029, but that's farther I've gotten so far. I'm kidding. So, Brandy, just to clarify then, so, you know, last year when we submitted our budget proposal, it was pretty simple. It was some line items with projected dollar amounts. So you're saying we should include basically project titles, descriptions, and justification for each thing?
I'm gonna give Sarah more detail. We'll have an internal discussion, and she's gonna provide you with, like, exactly what you're gonna need to do. So this is just kind of a heads up at this point.
Okay.
What your task list is yet.
Okay, so we, so we'll have a more robust discussion about it at the June meeting, and then when is the deadline then for the, for our submission of our budget for 2024?
Probably shortly thereafter.
Oh, really? Okay.
Yeah. Actually, I'm not entirely sure. I know that internally, we need to have some hard staff deadlines pretty quick here.
Mm-hmm.
But as I recall from last, from what little I know of last year, I wasn't here for the whole year, there was budget discussions that kind of continued all throughout the summer and fall. So I think Dan intends to visit with all of the commissions to have some discussions with you as well.
Good.
So I'll need to check with him to get a firm understanding of what the deadlines are for each commission and what the ask is from you to us.
Okay. And this is good, and, you know, we're learning more as we go through each year with this commission as well, and in our collaboration with the Parks Commission, for example. I know, Brandy, you've probably heard some of our discussion about the Autumn Arts Festival and potential budgeting for that, and so I think, you know, what we're learning this year will certainly go toward, you know, what we're looking for next year, or we may need some help in determining how we ask for that, if that's, if that's an ask from the Arts Commissioner, or if that's something that comes from, if it's a general fund type of thing for events.
Yeah, I think we, as a staff, just need to know overall, what is the, what are the planned activities?
Yeah.
And then we just need to make sure that they find their way into the budget somehow.
Yeah, okay.
If it's a capital improvement, which, you know, to be honest, these projects probably won't be. Events definitely wouldn't be. But we do, we do need to know what they, what they are and what they're might gonna cost.
So just to throw this out there for all of us to think about this in the coming months, then, capital improvements, I could see, you know, public art as falling under that. Would you see that that way?
I think so. I think that would be a good place for that, but, like, Autumn Arts Fest would be under the events budget.
Right. Yeah, but if we're doing, say, murals or public art installations or, you know, this-
Then would be CIP stuff.
Yep, great. Okay.
And to confirm, the city's operative budget calendar is January to December.
Yes. So we're a little late in the game, probably, for having this initial discussion with you, but we're dealing with a lot of new staff, and we're developing new processes, so please bear with us.
Great. Anything else, then, about the budget discussion for now, or just something to think about to prepare? See, I bet you've learned a lot on how much it costs to wrap a utility box?
Yes, and I was just actually going through some of the comments, and I'm like, you know, we're gonna have to, like, do another budget for more rounds.
People like them. You know, Carrie and I, I think, have learned a lot about budgets for public art, you know, murals and that type of thing, so unless we hit the jackpot with the grant, we'll be working probably some of that into our budget if we can. You know, there's just, maybe this is the, I don't know if this is the appropriate point to talk about this, because it'll come up in a different section too, Brandy, but just, this is mentioned in our minutes for Project Snowy, and it came up on the mural project as well. But if you look at the final sentence in the minutes under A1, our Project Snowy, Secretary Lang will speak with Community Development Director Brandy Howe to set up a time for commission members to present to the EDA. I don't know if that conversation has happened, because, you know, that could certainly impact our budgeting discussions as well.
Oh, you're asking if Sarah and I have had a conversation?
Yeah.
We did. We, I've advised her that this is probably not the best time for that discussion with the EDA for a couple of reasons. The primary one being that they are currently getting an ask from, I guess, staff to, to host the autumn, let's see, what is it called? The Fall Roundup Parade?
Oh.
Because the city can no longer, well, the, the North St. Paul Business Association, without the help of Carrie Urbanbach, the marketing liaison for the city, they can't do it this year, or for any future year, without additional help. So in order to do that, we're checking with our city attorney to see if the city can even do that function, and if so, we're kind of looking for a funding source for that. There's already an ask in the works, and it felt like it might be a bit much to continue to ask the EDA for additional funds.
Yeah, when would be a good time? You know, there's, I get it, but I know that these things never, they never fall in line the way that we'd like to, so.
I, I also wanted to put my couple cents in here. We, so, the concern right now is that $5,000 cost, right? And we met with Sarah and Brandy, and we have an update, and it's possible that it might not cost this much. I was gonna interface with Sarah a little bit, but this was like, just like last Friday, and I think we exchanged emails about it. So we can certainly share an update on new developments and the possibility that it might not cost that much.
Okay, great. Well, you know, with that, it's a good segue, See. I think, well, we can leave it there with the-
Well, I don't wanna interrupt you, but I'm gonna interrupt you. You asked the question, when would be a good time?
Uh-huh.
You know, I made that call kind of unilaterally, and if you disagree, the EDA does meet next Tuesday, so I could put it on the agenda for a representative of this body to come do a presentation.
Well, I think if, how often do they meet? Are they monthly, or?
They do. They meet the second Tuesday of the month.
Okay. So, you know, I mean, I don't know that we're prepared right now, or we will be by the end of this meeting to, you know, I want to ensure that we have a kind of a clear plan together before we go to present to the EDA. I don't want to go in with a general ask of, hey, can you help us out here? But, but more specific. And so what I think we'll see is what comes out of our discussion on our project updates tonight, and then maybe we'll see where we go from there, Brandy.
That sounds good. I'll wait to hear.
I would also imagine that once, you know, the utility boxes come, people start seeing more art, then the benefits of public art will be of much more interest to those that may want to contribute.
If I could make an additional comment, too, I was looking at the redevelopment master plan today for another purpose, and one of the recommendations in that document is to support public art within the, within the downtown area and the community, so that could be an angle with approaching the EDA, since that is a document that they edited.
Thank you for working on that as well.
That's the redevelopment master plan?
Yep, I can have Sarah email it to you if you haven't seen it before.
Is that the downtown redevelopment master plan, or?
The names of all these documents are a little misleading. The downtown one is actually the Seventh Avenue Reconstruction Plan. It's like the design for that. The redevelopment master plan is kind of focused on that downtown area from Highway 36 to just south of Seventh Avenue.
Yeah. That's the redevelopment?
Redevelopment Master Plan.
And when was that one drawn up?
That was completed last, last summer.
Oh, it was, okay. So it's more recent.
Is that on the website? Yep. I can have Sarah email it out to you guys.
But there is some information about supporting public art?
There is, yep.
In there. And the EDA was instrumental in developing that plan, is that what I-
They were the primary force behind-
Oh.
Creating it, and they funded it as well.
Excellent. It's already in their plan. It's perfect. Any other thoughts, questions about budget stuff? Okay, so more to come, though, Brandy?
Yep, I'll have Sarah prepare something for next meeting.
Okay. All right, great. So, at this point, then, we will move on to, we're gonna just review all of our projects. So we're gonna go through an update here, and we'll go through these in order. So project updates by subcommittees. So our first project on the list, Project A, is Project Snowy. So Stacy or See, do you want to give the update on this one?
I'm gonna hand it over to See.
Thanks, Stacy. Commissioner Maher, I'm happy to provide an update. So Project Snowy, lots have been happening, and we've been learning a lot as well. So some updates about it, just that, you know, like, we did learn that for businesses that would want to put it in the downtown area, you know, like, there's that encroachment fee, the permit, so, so they would be allowed to do that. However, between, between November 1 and March 30, they would need to move the Snowy statue out of the public right-of-way. So that, that would be the caveat if they were to place it on the public right-of-way. So that is something to consider. Also, we were successful in getting some information regarding help from Team Public Works to help with a location on where to decorate the statues, which is actually in their building, thank you very much, and also-
In their yard.
In their, in the yard?
It'll be in the yard, not the-
Okay. In their yard, which is fantastic, and somewhere protected, and somewhere where people can come and decorate. And so additionally to that, we are working with them to see if they could at least do part of the delivery as well, which is the delivery to the final location. And if it is a city-owned Snowy statue, they are willing to pour the concrete base where Snowy would sit on. So that is also excellent.
I'm sorry, See, can you break it?
Yes.
So all this is now Public Works related, so?
Uh, yes, that portion is-
Public Works is saying that, first of all, the Snowys could be painted somewhere in the Public Works yard?
Yes.
Okay.
Which is the back parking lot.
Right. So, so that's an option?
Yes.
Because we did, we were thinking of having it somewhere that it would be more visible to passersby. But it's good to know that that's an option.
Yeah, and, and, you know, like, the, just because we also want to consider, like, where it would need to, like, sit, just because of the weight of these statues, so, like, you know, having them all in an area, I need to be considerate of that. And then also, just timing-wise as well, like, you know, like, we wouldn't have a large window for these artists to do the decoration or painting.
Right.
It would need to happen within, like, a relatively short time, like, about around a two-week period.
Okay. Where would they be at the Public Works yard? Do you know, Lisa? Because it was just out in the open?
Yes.
Okay. So they could also then help with the bases, could potentially do the-
The bases as in, like, where the statue sits on, not necessarily, like, the statue base, like, where, like, what Tivoli II does?
Oh, I see.
Like, it's not that, it's where, you know, so like, if it sits on grass, I'm assuming, it doesn't, like, sink in-
If we want to have one in a park that they would, they would have, like, a foundation for them to stand on?
Yes.
Gotcha.
That's, yes. That's my understanding, at least. Yeah. So, so the, the question is still about the, the delivery from the vendor to the, to Public Works location, and, and I'll talk about that a little bit more. But just also, you know, that, are the cost of it, we are looking to keep it at the $5,000, especially for those who we have committed to. However, those, you know, like, depending on transportation cost, those that we haven't locked in, you know, that we haven't talked with yet, or haven't necessarily committed yet with, by a certain timeframe, which we haven't established yet, but we're thinking, like, late fall. Anyone who wants to purchase between, like, late fall to, like, early winter, the price might go up.
Okay.
And so, just to make sure that we have the transportation piece covered.
Okay.
I'm just curious, have we confirmed that we're still at that $5,000?
Uh, yes. So the, the, we, we are confirming that. We are confer, we, we are somewhat confirming that. We're still in the works. We are still working on it, because we, we, right now, the plan, since we have talked with Sarah and Brandy, is that we're going to also talk to City Council, just to kind of share with them the, the plan of everything, and we're still getting the final numbers regarding transportation from, like, Tivoli II, because at first, the thought was that it might be per statue the cost, but now, looking at it, it might be for, like, if there's 10 statues, that it might be a cost for all 10 statues.
Single charge.
Yeah, a single charge, which might be around, like, the 400 or 500, depending on how much time it takes to load and unload, and stay charged by the minute after that, too.
For the actual production of the Snowy, would it be $5,000?
Ye, yes. So, so the $5,000 would also be the, the manufacturing, the artist stipend, the concrete base, the vamela, everything.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's just the delivery piece?
Yeah, just the delivery thing, which, you know, potentially, you know, like, like I said, if it's not per statue, like, the 500 times 10, $5,000, if it's not that, if it's 500 for 10, 500 total, then I think we have budget in Project Snowy anyways to cover it. So.
Yeah. And, you know, I think the original, the original price tag for the Snowy, for the production, was less than $5,000, but we just, we rounded it up to $5,000, I think, just to, for other considerations, I guess. So it may end up that it ends up costing right at that amount anyway, but we'll just, we'll have to just see how it goes.
Yeah. I think it's important to remember that that $5,000 does, is more than just the production of Snowy, like, includes those light items that See mentioned. So Tivoli II has confirmed the rate is staying the same, which is part of the line item.
Yeah.
It's the other factors that are the variables.
Yeah. So, and I consider the painting of it as part of the production, and the vamela and the basis is part of the production.
Right, but they have separate line items, because they're not all done at the same place, and that's where we had the question.
Yeah, so aside from that, we are doing a lot of work on it, the agreements. Like I said, we are prepping to talk with City Council, and with that, we're putting together the final-
Program?
Yes, that's it, program. And we should have that to go by their June, early June meeting.
So what is the intention to present to Council?
The initial intention was that we'd ask them to save us some money.
Ah, I see. To help fund these in part?
Oh, wait.
Can I jump in?
Lisa, were you aware of this? You are now.
This, this idea stems from our meeting last Friday, the subcommittee meeting, and I, I was under the impression that Snowy hadn't been fully budgeted for, for 2023, and to make sure that we do have that money available in 2024 when it gets unrolled. We're making promises now for something that we may not have the ability to pay for tomorrow, so I thought that it would be a reasonable request to go to City Council and have them, have you provide a presentation on the project, and then they could do a resolution, resolution of support.
I, I can't remember what, so we had budgeted this year some amount. I don't think it was a lot, but there was some amount.
I think it was a thousand, is what Sarah had shared once.
It was budgeted this year, but so, if it's not gonna be spent this year, we would have to budget that, try and budget that for next year, so. Or if it's gonna be more than that, too, just so we're clear on that.
With the other project updates, I'm sure there's places to reallocate any unspent Snowy money?
Oh, trust me, everybody wants some of that money. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and so we're, we're gonna, we, we did do a little reworking of the timeline- Yeah, and so we're, we're gonna, we, we did do a little reworking of the timeline as well. We're, we're still expecting for a late May, early June of next year for finalization of, like, you know, of delivery, of like, you know, final locations. Um, the one thing, I think, that I ki- I mean, it's not really that important, but I thought I'd bring it up. Cause you, you know, like, we, we talk about it like a walking map. And so for me, in my mind, when I think walking map, I'm thinking, like, you know, like, within a five, ten-minute walk, I could, you know, kind of see all these, um, statues. But I, I know, like, my other fellow commissioner, um, wanted it at, like, different ends of North St. Paul, which to me, I don't think is walking distance. So, did you guys have thoughts about that?
Well, I would say that it depends on whoever purchases because it'll be their decision as to where it's placed.
Yes.
Is a big thing.
And, um, I, I would say, like, the city-owned ones, I suppose.
Oh.
Would it be of, um, if they're in, like, park spaces? Do you think the park commission might have some input around that?
Yeah.
I think that's the plan, I think there- we could rebrand the map as a location map and do like a passport system, so you can walk if you're able, or you can bike, or you can drive if you need to. I think having a map that pinpoints all of these, regardless of the location, is going to be important for community involvement.
Sounds good.
So, look, do, so that's part of the programming, right? Just having kind of this, this map of the locations?
Yes, yes, most definitely.
And what do you, your call, your working title is a walking map?
It was, now it might be a location map.
Snowy map.
A snowy map.
The passport to fun.
And, and so, um, so the next steps, I suppose, after this is uh, city council and then also the business association, um, sharing with them, getting their support, and then also then starting the, um, you know, starting to see who's interested in participating in the program, in purchasing.
So there, it sounds like there's a presentation that would be happening to the business association. Is that before or after the council? And then, yeah.
I think it might be after, um, but I, um, only just because that I think our plan is to sh- we, we do want to share with the council first and then, um, and then the business association. In case there's any questions from the council that we might need to, you know, make sure we-
And then just thinking to, uh, council member Wong about the, you know, the purpose of presenting to the council, I mean, there may be some requests for budget dollars, you know, a hint that, that's part of our budget request for next year. But it's, we're not asking for permission to do this, right? I mean, this has already been reviewed in front of council probably a couple of times, right?
Um, I mean, it's been, I mean, it's been updated here and there, um, but it's really not gotten into very much detail. Um, I mean, the prior council approved the additional funding for the snowy project from, from last year, um, and so, we're just, um, yeah.
But otherwise, the idea that, that the project is happening is not something that we're looking for approval from the council for at this time. It's just, it's more of a, less of an update and how it's going to roll out, right?
I, I would, I would say so, um, cause I don't, yeah, like you said, I don't think they're not aware, but then also I don't think they have the full details either, which-
Right.
I know this is a big project and, you know, like, it's a city-wide project and just want to make sure they're all on board.
And it makes sense to have a resolution of support, since they're new.
Well, that's, that's the thing, is I don't know if there would be a resolution. I don't know that they would have to vote on anything for this.
Depends on what the intent to do is, if it's, if it's the, the need for additional funding, I would say that, that, that would be probably a good idea.
I, I think that, sorry to-
Go ahead, jump in here.
But Sarah and I were kind of discussing this, this morning in terms of what is the, what, what should be the process in general for these commissions? And what is the, like, passing of the baton and who gets to decide what kind of scenarios? And we were trying to walk through it and we looked at the, um, chapter thirty-two, which is the, the establishment of the Arts and Cultures Commission and your powers and duties. And so in here, it's, it starts out saying, um, the Arts Commission shall have the following duties. First is to make recommendations on all requests for installations on city property. So that's make recommendations. So ultimately, the decision lies with city council. So I think that it does fall in, into, it's acceptable to approach them with your, your program, um, specifically, or rather especially for these larger programs that are going to be fairly robust. They're going to cost a lot of money and they're going to be highly visible on city property. So I think it does make sense to go to them to let them know what's going on and to make sure that they're on board.
Yeah, and m- my point is that we have gone to them at least a couple of times. And so, granted, there's different members of the council at this point, but, um, there, I just think that there are different elements to this and I, you know, I, I just am, I'm hoping that this wouldn't be presented to the council, the new council, and that there would be this, that the, the, the project would have an override and then somehow the council would say, well, we don't want to do this, we don't want you to do it. And it's, you know, when you look at the cost of it, the cost to the city is negligible. It's, you know, the, the majority of the cost of the project is going to be borne by the, uh, the entities or individuals who choose to purchase these things. So the city's involvement in it is, is staying relatively small. So, yeah, I'm just, y- you know, just want to, I just think it's good for us to be clear on what the, the purpose is. And even when it comes, I think it is very fair for us to be presenting to the council at the time where we're talking about, we now have this many confirmed snowy statues that are being donated to the city for which we will wa- want to, we are recommending these locations for them to be sort of permanently installed. That, I think, we definitely want to bring to the council. And work, you know, that would be something we'd be working in conjunction with the Parks Commission on as well. Um, but that's different and we're, we're just, we're not, we're not even close to that yet, right? So, but that, that would be something down the line where we would get to that. But so I, to me, it just seems like the, the purpose of, of going to the council, say if it's this summer, would be mostly update, right? And that there, you know, if anything, when it comes to budget, it could be something along the lines of, you know, we may be looking, uh, we will be asking for the council for approval of our Arts Commission budget, whi- which will include a line item, which is similar to what you had approved for this year. You know what I mean? It's not something that we're coming in and saying, hey, hey, city council, we're doing this big project and we need a ton of money and we want you to approve that. I think it's-
Yeah, and it'll be important, um, to confirm that cost of transportation, which we hope to get soon, um-
Yeah.
From Tivoli Two, so.
Okay.
That's the, that's the update, any other questions?
Oh, I, I, I'm, I'm thrilled that still moving along, making progress. So it's good.
Yeah, and if you decide to present this summer and, um, you would also like additional, for me to communicate a little bit more about it, I'm definitely happy to do so in more detail, just.
Good, good. Okay, uh, moving on then, uh, well, these got a little reversed, I think, but I have murals listed next on my, uh, A three here. Carrie, do you want to talk about that one?
Yeah, happy to, uh, mural project. So, um, I'm going to steal a little bit of thunder from utility boxes, C, I'm sorry, but it was such a fun project to watch because as people did their voting, it was really fun to read the comments. I really liked that system that, uh, Carrie had set up, what was it, OpenGov or whatever? Cause you could see what everyone was, was saying. And so, when we got together as the mural group, we were like, okay, we got, you know, a couple irons in the fire to see if we can get some funding, but what should be our first project? And so we read with great interest, a lot of people recommending the beach bathroom house at Silver Lake. Is that right? Silver Lake Beach? Yeah.
Yeah.
So that was kind of the first, um, thought we had or the first project idea we had in mind, just basically from that feedback. So thank you so much for your work on that and getting that going.
Yeah.
Um, so yeah, so that's what we're, um, working at, on doing next.
And I have some more information as far as that mural goes. I was able to contact the muralist that did the Mancini's mural. And he is willing and excited to work with us, um, within our budget, which is awesome. So I need to just bring him on board with us to have some discussion on the art. I showed him the picture that you had recommended and he had questions if it was, you know, the Pacific scene or the Atlantic scene, and I'm like, oh, I don't think it was either of those. So he has some really good ideas and would like to meet with us, whether it's be a Zoom in our subcommittee or-
Yeah, and I think we should talk about that a little bit further too, Lisa, cause I, I wonder if we shouldn't still have, um, a request for proposals or something from artists, cause if there's this artist and there's, you know, it's, we kind of started looking back through, uh, our, remember, uh, a couple of years ago, we started building the process map for what it, how we should do projects like this?
Yeah.
And how do you go through, you know, there are these, um, artist selection, community engagement, installation, approvals and permits, you know, so all these different, these different phases of the project.
Well, I thought we had discussed that we would start here just to get the ball rolling so that we could get this mural going this summer.
Yep, but I didn't know that we decided on an artist, so I think it was good to talk to an artist and see, you know, gauge interest.
Okay.
Um, but I think we should talk about that a little bit further and see if we don't want to have maybe, even if it's a, even if it's a short call for artists, just to say, hey, we're doing this and so that this person a- as well could, could just input their information so that we would say, okay, well now we can consider this objectively and clearly, just like we would any other artist that would come in with something.
Okay.
Um, and if we decide that, yes, this is the right direction that we want to go, then great.
Okay.
Um, and then we're good. Cause, I, I mean, again, we have no idea, cause we, you know, we did one call for artists so far for the project snowy a year or so ago. And we had, you know, I think maybe a half a dozen submissions.
Right.
Um, for which, that's a project where we would need many more submissions, I would hope. So for muralists, I, you know, it may be even fewer submissions that would come in. But I think we should step back and say, hey, let's, let's follow a process.
Okay.
You know, let's establish and follow a process so we can be consistent with that. Even if it is, um, an abbreviated process for this first one so that we can get going on it.
Sure, all right.
Yeah.
I, I'll just let them know that there'll be a, a process and if you'd like to apply.
Yeah, it's kind of, I think it's good, it just kind of gets everything on the record.
Okay.
Everything, you know, above board, you know, we're not working back channels to try and do something or anything like that. But yeah, it, it's great that, that he's interested, you know? Anybody that, is there anybody that's-
I was excited when he said-
Yeah.
Yeah. So I think what we need to do is our subcommittee needs to talk further about that.
Okay.
And get a plan together, um, for how we want to do that, but- Um, Carrie, were you going to add anything further on that or?
That's all I had.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think we're just, the way I see it is that, so I think it's really exciting. I think, uh, as it turned out, it, with the timing, was that, uh, the city and Public Works had already been working on a remodel of those, uh, that bathroom building at Silver Lake Park. And so they were about to spend money to have somebody paint it. And we said, before you spend that money, I'm going to get somebody else to paint it in a di- in a different way. So, um, it all just kind of came together, sort of fell in our lap, so I think, um, that's great. So I think we need to get together and say, okay, what's our plan to get this, uh, rolling so that we can make it a reality?
Sure.
Say that the capital improvement plan that's, you know, being revamped will be really beneficial to this group, too, if we're looking, if you're all looking for more murals and things like that, um, because a lot of those renovations and things will be on there. So, um, if it's ten years out, then you can plan ten years of murals.
Can I add something to, to this topic before you move on?
Sure.
Um, it was presented to the Parks Commission last week that the bathhouse over at Silver Lake was selected. And they did, they're excited about the project happening over there, but they do have some concerns about visibility from, I guess, the housing, um, across the street. So they're, they're concerned with sightlines and they would like to have some chance to comment on, on the mural, if you have a chance to, to do that.
Yeah, yeah, so we need to get in front of the Parks, uh, Commission as well. We just missed that, uh, last week when they were meeting, so. I have concern, I have the same concerns, you know, so, um, especially depending on, on what the mural may be, that if it's something that's facing directly into a house across the street, there could be some issues there, so, um.
I don't know, I might want to look at a mural versus an old building.
Could be, you know? And that's, that's one of the things when it, when it comes to these types of things that, you know, the people of North St. Paul are not a monolithic entity, they're, it's twelve thousand individuals with all different opinions, you know, so. I'm sure there are some people that look at that bathroom building right now that think it's ugly and some that think it's beautiful and most people don't care. And I think the same thing will happen if we paint a mural on it. Like, some will think it's ugly and some will think it's beautiful and most people won't care. But that's just a-
Life.
That's the- That's, uh, one of the costs of progress, you know? If you want to do anything, you're gonna, there will be some disagreement. And, and that's okay, okay to have disagreement.
Could you remind me what's, what's in the budget for, for the mural?
Two thousand dollars.
I thi- I thi- we had like two budget, two mural projects and I, I thought it was like two thousand dollars for each one.
Yes.
Yep.
And so we could combine that for a mural project, but that's something that we'll have to discuss further. I don't know if you heard anything more about that, Lisa Wong, about, uh, working with what the, uh, Public Works budget was for painting that already and if that could be part of that budget for the mural.
I'm, I'm not a hundred percent certain, but I don't think that was well received, that it would come out of the Public Works budget, it would come out of our budget. So I can't, Lisa will be able to confirm that.
I will check with Brian on that, um, what that might look like. I know that council did approve funding for, um, the re-up of the, the, uh, the building. So what that looks like or what line items want to be shared or what have you, I think that will be a discussion for Brian and, um-
It seemed to me, I mean, if they already had some money allocated for painting the building, that it seems reasonable that that money could still go towards painting the building. And it would just be added to the money that this commission has for painting the building, for doing a mural. So, we'll see though, and we don't know what the cost will be, so we'll have to get some estimates and discussions about that, too, so. Anything else?
Just, again, thank you, C, for, um, and your committee for putting that survey together, cause I think that not only informed, you know, kind of where we were going with it, but it was just a great way to get community involvement, so, thank you.
No problem. I also think that, you know, like, I think that that's the greatness of it, is, you know, like, being, to be like customer-focused, to be, you know, like, human-centered, right? Got to get that feedback from the people so that we know what they want and deliver it, since that is who we serve, that are, are North St. Paul neighbors, so, thank you.
Okay, great, anything else on murals? All right, let's move on, so utility box update.
Yeah, utility box updates. Uh, so, uh, ye- I am not sure if you guys heard, but we have two winners. Uh, I mean, we have winners for each of the box, right? Did, did you, did folks get a chance to see which ones won?
Yeah, mine won.
Yeah. Yours?
Which one was yours?
The yellow one, the yellow background with the book.
Carrie stuffed the ballot box.
I did not, I just sent it to everyone I knew, that's all, yes.
You submitted the, no, those images, those were the ones that you told, I got it.
The one with the yellow background and the open book, and then the other was the heartstrings. And so, um, there were over two hundred people that-
And so, um, there were over 200 people that voted, and, um, and so, I think, like, percentage wise though, like, it was quite somewhat close, especially for the, um, for the bookstore utility box. So, but, you know, um, we got to come up with winners. So, that's what we have, um, and we're still working with Roddy's, uh, for those, the two there. And they will be historical. I forget if we already updated you guys or not, but like, we have, we sent them the five, um, top ones that were like, had the best resolution, and also the ones that seem the most appropriate for, um, for the location as well, and, um, something that might match more of like what Roddy is looking for.
Those are all from, pictures from the Historical Society?
Yes.
Yeah, that's great.
And so, we, we sent that over. Um, I think she's still, um, Roddy's owner, she's still looking at it, um, I believe. You know, like, wanting to kind of look at the, like, the layout, but I think we'll, uh, we, we won't be able to see, like, work on the layout until like, we work with our vendor, which we probably won't until we have those final pictures. So, but I think, you know, like, whichever ones she ends up choosing, I think will work out great. So, that's the only thing that I think is slightly off timeline wise, but I think we're still on track, otherwise for... Will there be a chance to put like photos courtesy of the Historical Society somewhere on the, on the pictures, or on the wraps? Just a nice little call out, since they were such a good partner to us, and I know they, um, you know, it'd just be a nice thing to do.
Potentially, yeah.
Okay, I think that'd be great.
And, and, am I seeing this right? These are all the comments that were left?
I don't think those are all the comments, because I remember reading more.
Okay.
Than the ones that I saw. And I, I would like to respond a little bit, um, to the ones about, you know, why are we using stock images? Why aren't we paying artists? And of course, I think everyone on this commission, or in the city, would want us to pay artists. I mean, obviously, that's number one priority. There's just not the money to do it yet. So, um, yeah, it's unfortunate we're using stock images, but that's the best we can do right now to get, to get this project completed. That's my two cents.
Thank you.
Yeah, agreed.
That feedback, even in the comment section too, I welcome it with open arms, from a, from a position of, we've already had these discussions of incorporating these things, and they're in the plans for the future. So, we're already a step ahead of that feedback, in my opinion. Like, it made me proud of where we're at.
Yeah.
Great reframe. Yeah, and, and there's more utility boxes, more opportunities. So, um, you know, for those who are asking, like, is, you know, are these the only options? More options will be available in the future, so...
So, what is, uh, ballpark date for installation on DC?
Uh, it, it was still June 2.
Okay.
I think, at least for the few that had community voting, I believe those are still on track. I was hoping Sarah could confirm, but, um, we'll have to wait on that.
So, on track for June 2?
Uh, June 1 or June 2, yes.
Okay.
That was the aim.
I believe it was, uh, to coincide with, or coordinate with the car show.
Oh, great. What, what is the name of the, uh, company that we're using to do the wraps?
Uh, FTCC in Oakdale.
Say it again?
FTCC. I think it's like finishing touch CC. It meant something.
Nice.
Gotcha. Well, this is fantastic. I will say that, um, neither of the selections that I voted for were chosen.
Oh.
But, I, I'm just really pleased with the process and, and it out, the outcome. See, we all have different opinions.
Tom, me too. The ones I voted for didn't.
Yeah, so it's democracy in action, right? So, um, I, I think the process was good. I think everything you got here is right, you know, yeah, we have, uh, you know, we have plans to do more, and we will incorporate original art, you know, we want to do more of that type of thing. But this was just to kind of get us going, you know? And, uh, so this is great, so I really appreciate the group's work on this, and I really look forward to seeing these out there.
Yeah, I think that's certainly something to be proud of. Over 200 people, um, saying something about, um, art in our community is, is huge.
Did, did you, did you hear whether there was any in-person voting?
Oh, I didn't, did you hear about any in-person voting?
Was there any, anybody?
I, I voted in person, I'm not sure what you mean by hearing about it.
There was then.
So, people could come to City Hall and vote?
Yeah. Yeah. But yeah, I think, you know, that's just, uh, that's just the start. So, once we start engaging people in, you know, whether it be submit your photos, or submit your own art, then we're going to really, I think, be a lot.
Now, what about ranked choice voting?
I like it. But hey, we can talk about it another time.
That's another subject, yeah. Okay, anything else on the utility boxes?
Really excited to expand on the line item budget request for next year.
There you go.
Whoop.
So, one thing that would be helpful is to just, you know, see what the final cost was for these. So, four, so it gives us something to think about as we put that line item in the budget for next year. So, we can say, okay, we did four last year, it cost this much money. Our goal is to do these specific boxes next year, and so we would need this much money to do those. Something like that'd be helpful. Great, you leaving? Okay.
Good luck.
I have to go.
Have fun.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Alright, okay, so moving on then, next up is art cart. Lisa Ritchie?
Yep, the update for that is Amanda and I met last Thursday to discuss, and at that point, we only had one volunteer, so we really couldn't move forward with planning. We need at least two volunteers for each event. But since then, we did get another volunteer, and I've contacted both of them. One of them I had to leave a message for, the other one is on board for four of the events that we've discussed. It would be the June 9th at the car show, and then the three music in the park.
Okay.
Um, and I can also commit to the June 15th car show. Um, so we would for sure be committed to that, because the minimum of two would be required, or would be met. And then, we'd just be looking, I think, depending on their availability, if we wanted to add more throughout the months, like, another one each month, we could, we could maybe look into that. But I think this is a good start, just to get those four dates narrowed down.
Could you give me those four dates again, Lisa? So, I've got June 9th, that's the city night at the car show.
Yep, and that project will be rock painting.
Okay.
And then June 15th, which is music, music in the park.
And the, are, are all the music in the parks at KC? They are, okay.
Yeah.
So, and so this was, I'm sorry, June 15th?
Yep.
June 15th?
And July 20th. And August 17th.
Excellent. And so, so far you have, we have two volunteers.
We have two volunteers, one of them has committed to each of those dates, and then
Oh, great.
the other one is Alice, who was with us last year. I know, she was great, so hopefully those dates work for her as well.
Yeah.
Oh, great.
And if not, we've got a connection in National Owners Society, but we can get some more kids to...
Yes.
Yeah, and I think, I wonder if we could keep, I think it's good if we could keep posting that, because even if we had more than two people, I think it's okay, and then just to have a reserve too.
Oh, absolutely.
Somebody doesn't, can't make it. So, can we keep posting that on the, um, city newsletter? Okay. So, we're gonna, we're gonna post again, continue to post on city newsletter. Great, uh, that's excellent, Lisa. Good news. Any update, any, anything else on that then? So, it's, all of our dates are, are set. Are we doing just one car show this year, or are we going to do two?
At this point, just the one.
Okay. So, we just, we're going to shoot for four dates this summer?
Yep, and possibly add more, depending on...
Oh, uh, well, of course, we can add, the, a fifth would be, um, Autumn Arts Festival.
September 16th.
Yep.
Oh, that's right.
So, add, put that one on there, it'll be good, but yeah, I think that's great. So, this one is almost all green. We've got scheduled dates and venues, we've got find volunteers, and then develop programming. So, I know we have, we have rock painting as one, and then we'll come up with others as time goes on. Something you want to add, Commissioner Yang?
No. So...
You alright over there?
So, you, you know, like, last year, last year, we, we wanted toilet paper rolls saved, and I still have so many saved.
We will for sure put those toilet paper rolls to good use, I promise you.
They'll be next to my desk forever. I'm like, I'm going to bring it in, I'm going to, you know?
What, what was this toilet paper rolls?
Take that away from you, please.
For our projects, we, we had asked for people to donate those, and...
So, something with toilet paper rolls must be developed.
That'll be our second June 5th.
There we go.
June 15th.
I was going to say, we might do.
Well, I think we're okay for now.
You don't want to fill the art cart up?
Could be fun.
Ah, good stuff.
I have a lot of wine for you.
Look at this, just like the, you know, the Go Get 'Em Award for, uh, the Arts and Culture Commission for this month goes to C. Yang, though, I have to say. You know, the utility boxes, Project Snowy, and now the toilet paper rolls, where does it end with you? You just...
Yeah, I...
You're all over it.
Since last year, Tom, I, it's been, and like my...
You've been saving toilet paper rolls?
I was, and then like, my husband's like, are you going to do anything with it? And so, I finally was just like, okay, I, I'm going to stop collecting them. So, I did stop like, in December, but anyways, just, yeah.
But we'll still take them.
Okay.
Just bring them down.
And no, no judgment about the volume of toilet paper used at your house.
None at all.
You got a couple thousand of them, that, hey, it's a good thing, right? Carrie, no judgment?
No judgments, nope.
Okay. No, but...
Do you put that in the newsletter? Send in your toilet rolls?
No, 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 no.
No.
I've got so much stuff in the art cart right now that needs to be organized.
For real though, C, you've, you've, you've been, uh, knocking it out of the park, so appreciate all the work you're doing.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, Paint and SIP, uh, any update on this?
Yes, unfortunately, I do not have as good a news for this subject. Um, I'm asking that we're going to, we can postpone the main event. I've just been crazy busy, and I did not get the painting done yet. And it would just be too short of a notice, I, I want to give it more time to
That's fine.
get it painted, and get it advertised, and so...
Totally fine.
Shooting something in June.
Shooting for a June date?
Yeah. And I'll touch base with Sarah and find about, find out about availability. It's usually not a problem during the week, um, but then I'll also let you know, so we can...
Awesome. And is the add-in, audience still like, adults, or targeted audience, adults?
I'm open to suggestions on that. I know that was kind of the recommendation, especially if people can bring their own alcohol, um, keep it at the adult level. But we did agree that the price would stay the same at $10.
Okay, great.
Okay?
I think that's good, it makes it accessible. And I think it's summertime is a great time to do that too, because, you know, doors open and...
Yeah, even paint on the patio, maybe, if the weather's good, yeah.
Probably not good to, it's not that...
Oh, there's no odor to the acrylic.
Oh, okay.
We're good. But we will be getting some fresh air if we can.
It's all going to, this, this paint and SIP is all going to be graffiti style, so it's all spray paint.
Oh.
That would be fun.
That would be very cool.
If you can find somebody to do that.
Absolutely.
Hey, anybody learn how, anybody that wants to learn how to tag up your city, we're not doing that. Alright, so find volunteers, do you have volunteers, do you feel in place for that? You good on volunteers?
Yeah, Carrie, Carrie said she would help.
Okay.
Right? I mean, if the date, we'll, we'll work the dates, I know, you, you got my back here, you always...
Okay, um, last, I think, is Autumn Arts Festival. Okay, what can I tell you about this? Amanda usually takes the lead on this one. Amanda's superstar, working on this, especially with her experience as being an, an artisan who participates in a lot of these things, um, but she's working on getting that going. Brandy, I don't know if you know, has that been, has that been opened up on, I think it was going to go on Open Gov, the application process, I think it is.
As far as the vendors?
Vendors?
The tents?
The artisan vendors for the Autumn Arts Festival.
Yeah, that, that has.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Well, I don't think any fees have been collected yet, but it's available to sign up.
Right, and there were some questions about the fees, right?
Yep, do you want to talk about that now, or?
I don't know, do you think, is that something we can just take care of offline, or?
Well, we've been kind of struggling with this internally, um, a little bit, because the fee schedule indicates there's an 80, $80 fee. And then it came to our attention after the event was posted on the newsletter, that we had two separate fees, one being 35, and I don't remember what the other fee was.
80 or?
I think it was like 65.
65, so less than what is on the fee schedule. Um, so now we've got some conflicting information, and we don't have, you know, authorization from council to modify the fees. So, we're trying to figure out how to best approach that. So, we might need to do a fee schedule modification request to city council, and provide some rationale as to where we came up with the reduced rates.
So, does the fee sk- what, how does the fee schedule have it listed, that as it relates to vendors for events like this?
I don't think it specifies this kind of event, so this could be a new, unique classification under the fee schedule.
Brandy, if I remember correctly, last year, the event permit, I, may have been pulled by the park commission. So, they paid the $80 fee, and then vendors pay $65 to be a participant in the event. But I don't know if there's any documentation on that. But I remember that there was something with it, and the fee last year was not $65, it was less than that. Was it 40 or 50?
It was, yeah. And so, well, I guess my question then for, um, for the council or staff would be, um, if, if there's, if it's not articulated in the fee schedule, then does it matter? So, if it is a, a special event, um, where this type of fee i- is, is not in the fee schedule as it is, would it just fall under the jurisdiction of the event itself? Or does it, so does it have to match something that is already articulated in the fee schedule? And if it's not in the fee schedule, then how could it anyway?
Yeah, you're bringing up a good point, because that makes me think of your events that you're hosting, like the SIP and Paint and SIP, that has a fee associated with it.
Yeah, great point, exactly, right?
So, I, I don't know, this, it's going to take a little bit of investigation.
Okay.
If it does turn out that we require a fee schedule amendment, then I would expect that it'll probably go on the next council agenda in two weeks.
Okay.
Yeah.
Or Lisa, I think you're going to have to charge 80 bucks a head for the Paint and SIP.
Okay.
On the website, it looks like $65 for a 10 by 10 space, and $100 for a 10 by 20 space. Does that resonate with you?
That's, that sounds about right. I, you know, I know, we, we came up with, um, the fees were determined by the group, so there's this subgroup, um, there's a couple people, myself and Amanda from the Arts Commission, and then a couple people from the Parks Commission, who have been working as like, a collaborative subgroup to, to try and shape up the framework for this event. And we came up with that, those fees, based on, you know, so what's an average fee that is charged around the region, and then go less than that.
Yeah.
Because this is still a somewhat fledgling event, you know? Last year, we were really low, because it was the first time we were doing it. And so, we really wanted to give opportunities to people. This time, we increased it just a little bit, I think it's 15 bucks, I think it was 50 bucks last year, maybe. So, it's increased just a little bit, but then we made it, we distinguished if you had a, you know, a larger size setup, that it would be a somewhat higher fee.
Well, then it's in...
Which is typical.
Yeah, and then I'm going through the application process, and so it says selector option, 10 by 10 space, $65, 10 by 20, $100, 10 by 10...
ten by ten emerging artist space, thirty dollars.
That's right, and so we also wanted to, you know, open it up to people who are really just kind of getting started in this, where there, it's really kind of a bigger risk for them to, to, to submit an application and pay this fee, because they, they maybe haven't sold anything before, and they're new to this, and they're not sure what it would take just to cover their costs.
Yeah, is there a guideline for that?
I, I can't recall, you know, I know that that's something that, you know, Amanda's really an expert on this, and I think she did some of that together. But that was the, that's the purpose of that, is to say that, you know, people who were within, you know, the first couple of years of their existence of doing this.
I like that. That's a nice way to set that up. It keeps it very equitable and accessible for a lot of people that might not otherwise take the leap to be in this.
That was, that was part of the intention, and, you know, so when we, when we look at how did we arrive at the, the cost for these things, it was really, how do we make it as cheap as possible for people?
Then, Brandy, you were saying something about eighty-five dollars. That's the event permit fee.
Oh, I see, got it.
Okay, so we gotta figure out who's covering that.
No, so that might just be something
Maybe that should even be addressed with the attorney, to find out if we can, if commissions can host the event and pay the special event permit, and then charge vendors.
Yep, I'm making a list of questions.
Yeah.
Thank you, Brandy.
You're welcome.
So anyway, the, just to take the kind of financing question further, so the, something that we're working through with city staff and, and council too, will just be how the entire event is funded. Because we do have an event budget, Councilmember Wong, right?
One more time?
There is some sort of events budget that is, you know, primarily meant to cover costs of music in the parks, I think, but it's, it's expressly for that. But, so we're looking at, you know, because of the, there is some tricky nature to, you know, asking for sponsors and things like that. And so how do we cover the costs of the event? The costs are not, are not very large, and a lot of the costs for producing the event can be brought back through the, the fees for the, the vendors and things, but, but it's just kind of coordinating some of those things and how that will work. So we're looking to, you know, we're looking to, to, to grow every year, and this year, I think, we're taking a nice step forward. I, I, our expectation is to have at least twice as many vendors there, and to have a better location for artists to perform, and probably more artists who do longer performances, things like that, so. But one of the things is, Casey, you know, the, the quote-unquote "stage" is not a stage in the park building. You know, that covered patio area, it's been used as a stage, and it's a really a terrible location as far as the festival is concerned, because it's kind of pointing out away from everything else. So that was a problem for us last year that we wanted to address by possibly having some kind of stage, and maybe even tented area, so that it's, we don't have to worry about weather, but there's a more established place for performers to, to be up and perform, and easier for people to see, and, and things like that, so. But also making more, more activities available to people of all ages, you know, so there, there's some costs associated with that, but. So those are details that we're still gonna be working through, and how that all gets funded.
Well, I'm excited.
Yeah, and, you know, one of the things that we'll be looking for will be volunteers for that event, too. You know, last year, I have to say, you know, Sarah Zaradka from the Parks Commission, her guidance for our event last year was that really didn't require a whole lot of volunteers, because the vendors sort of took care of themselves, and, and she was right. I mean, there really weren't a lot of volunteers. I know C. came, and you helped with the Art Cart, and Lisa was there to help with the face painting, but, you know, it, it wasn't really a lot of work, and it didn't require a lot of volunteers, so. But, you know, I, despite the cold, I thought it was a fun event last year, and I, I expected to be much bigger and much funner this year, too, so.
Hopefully, less cold.
And less cold. So we moved it, what, almost a whole month earlier, but it's Minnesota, right? So who knows what'll happen? So that is the update, I think, on the Autumn Arts Festival, unless I'm missing anything. So leave it at that. All right, I think that covers all of our items for today. Making progress. All right, let's move on in our agenda on section eight, old business. I don't think we had any old business to discuss. Anybody got anything? All right, reports from staff. Brandy, anything you wanna share with us today?
I have nothing to report.
Okay. Reports from commissioners, let me start down on my left with Commissioner Yang. You have anything you wanna add today?
You know, there was that one thing that I brought up that one time a few months ago.
The toilet paper rolls.
Oh, yeah, that's great. Yeah, we're good. That one thing?
The, um, St. Paul and Minnesota Foundation grants, and I just wanted to bring it up again, just to see if that's on there.
Yeah, we have a whole login, I set that up, so we're set.
Okay.
Yep, thank you for bringing that up.
Wait, what was that?
Can you add a little context, I'm sorry?
Sure, St. Paul Minnesota Foundation, they have the Mardig Foundation, those were the ones that we were looking at, Tom, Mardig Foundation and the Bigelow Foundation. They have a whole separate grants portal, so we're set up with the Arts Commission login and account, so we can apply for those grants. They are not yet open. They did their January deadlines, the June are not out yet. But coming up, and then like, since we only meet once, once a month, just don't want to, don't want us to miss it.
Carrie, thanks for staying on top of that stuff.
My pleasure.
Well, then I'll move down to you then, Carrie.
I got nothing, that's it.
Okay, Lisa?
I don't have anything else.
Okay, and I don't think I have anything either. So council liaison. Lisa W., anything for us today?
In terms of the Arts and Culture Commission, I don't think so. We, well, I'll say that we're getting an Ethiopian restaurant downtown.
Wow!
Yeah, the old Brothers Bistro, so I am thrilled, and Brandy worked on, you know, the zoning and their, you know, plans and stuff, and we approved it last night.
Great job, Brandy and Lisa!
And, yeah, they have their liquor license going up, and so, yeah, everyone is on board, and do you know when they're gonna come in?
They said they were coming, let's see, I don't have the exact date, but I think it's within a month. It's gonna be pretty soon.
Super exciting, so maybe as the Arts and Culture Commission, it may be nice to go and eat there, or something, or however we wanna celebrate that.
I didn't know Brothers wasn't there.
They moved to Roseville.
They went to Roseville.
What?
Traitors. I mean
Maybe more foot traffic, but, well, who knows?
I have a question, I have a couple of questions about other things.
Yeah, shoot.
One is, what's the timeline for the Dunkin' Donuts?
Brandy?
I, I inquired about that project recently, and there has, their architect came back with a response that did not seem too encouraging. The state of the materials and interest rates have really expanded project costs to the point where they're not certain of what the future is.
Ah.
And it, it's on hold at this point.
Okay, well, close to that location is the former location of the Tap and Grill, which had been the Ground Round out in front of Target. And I saw some earth movers out in front of there. Is something happening there?
Yeah, there was some cleanup that was done over there, so, yeah, it's, I believe, looking good these days, that's what
Yeah, it's code enforcement related, it's not a new, a new project.
Oh, okay. So I thought maybe cleanup for the purpose of building something.
Not yet, but maybe, maybe someday soon. It's on our to-do list to find some.
And there is still, then, the Oil Can Henrys building back behind there. What's, do you know what's happening with that?
I don't, I was asking Jason Mallinger, our code enforcement officer, about that today, and he's under the impression that it's owned by Valvoline, and they're just kind of holding it for this point. But I thought I heard another rumor that it was purchased, so I honestly don't know what the status is of that.
When I looked at that when I still worked here for the city, it was purchased by a private owner, and without, we'd never got any information other than she purchased it, and
Yeah, that was my, my understanding with that building particularly.
And then lastly, for my question for you would be, what's the projected demolition date of the Lilly Building to get started on that project?
That is another project that is not necessarily stalled, but it is facing hurdles, we'll call it. So we are still working with the developer to try to find mechanisms to move forward financially. I think that is still anticipated demolition in the next few months.
Okay.
Assuming that project is secure, but that remains to be seen.
Okay, gotcha.
What about that water main, or the
It's happening. It's being redone.
How long does that take, you know? The water main on McKnight?
Let me check the, the Google here. I think that it's in the city's It's McKnight Water Main.
It's really inconveniencing me.
Should've asked me about Seventh Avenue, I know the answer to that one.
Oh, what's the answer to that one?
I think that one is slated for completion by September, as Carrie had mentioned, the water main project.
It, it, yeah, it'll, it'll interfere, absolutely.
Shifting everything
I guess so. The McKnight project is actually a county project, so we're just
Use too many print cells to figure out how to get there. Sorry.
Right, Brandy?
It, it is a county project, the city is doing some, you know
The water main in it, yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't see a timeframe on here. It's in the city newsletter, I'm sure, though.
Okay. Anything else?
Or, as Carrie would tell you, you can sign up for alerts that go directly to your cell phone via
That's great, too, but I want an answer now.
Oh, one thing about the community center, yeah, there's just been several different rounds of engagement. Brandy's been there, as well as our consultants, just engaging different stakeholders, and it sounds like there are several partners that are interested in the programming piece, which is really a big piece for us, I think, as a city, because we don't really operate any. So, yeah, it's looking pretty positive, I'd say. Anything else you'd like to add?
Oh, yeah, we, I, I saw it in your minutes, that you'd mentioned that we'd approach the, we have lobbyists that are working for us in Washington at the State Capitol, too. And the Betty McCollum's office had, and Senator Smith and Senator Klobuchar have recommended approval of the project for two million dollars. So that's positive, so we're waiting to hear the outcome of that, and also
Project, is that for the refurbishment of the building, or for just general moving forward with?
Moving forward, refurbishing it to get it kind of in a position of no longer being deferred maintenance.
Yeah.
But also to, you know, spur some redevelopment, re-instate activity into the building.
So we could potentially get some federal dollars for that.
Potentially could, yeah.
That'd be fabulous.
They need some art in there?
I know, every, every place could need, you know, I've got some ideas that we can talk about offline for where art can go to.
And our new election pulling place is at the community center, one of them, so, great idea.
So, is Craig Waldron still working on that project, the whole community center thing, or what has happened with that, the listening sessions and everything that happened with the community center?
Listening sessions in terms of community outreach.
Yeah, so
Businesses and
Craig Waldron was, I know he was spearheading, he was like, I don't know, the project lead for
Yep, he was until probably about March, January, or maybe, I don't know. Sometime when it was still quite cold out, he kind of pulled back and kind of passed the baton on to Brian.
I see.
So it's, it's really at this point being led by the architects, so they have, for the past couple of weeks, been conducting, you know, stakeholder meetings, one-on-one with groups from all over, all over town, so churches, some nonprofits, some businesses like Love's and the new skate shop, the school district, library. The library, yep, so they're, all the big players in town that may have an interest in using the space. We sat down, I tried to go to all the meetings, and met with these people directly to kind of get their feedback in terms of, what do you see as the future of the building? Do you have any need for space within the building? Would you be willing to pay a fee to use that space? Do you have an opinion other than, should it continue as a, as a community center? So we kind of got feedback across the spectrum, and so they're going to be developing a report about that feedback as part of their feasibility analysis that will go to city council sometime in the spring here.
I see, and so the, did you say the architect group is leading that effort?
That particular effort, yep.
Okay, gotcha. Great, well, a lot going on.
Yeah.
Lot going on.
Anything else, Lisa? All right, if not, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Once again, usually people jump on this one. I got a motion.
Seconded.
Lisa Ritchie, I got a second from Carrie. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, meeting is adjourned at seven fifty-three PM. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.